I move that the school board approve the terms of the superintendent employment agreement with Denise Juno as attached to this board action report and authorize Board President Leslie Harris to take the necessary steps to sign and implement this agreement. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
I second the motion.
I would invite my colleagues to go down, sit in the front row as we sign this agreement, after we have comments, concerns, and questions, and we take a vote. I'm just so excited, I'm just trying to skip right through it. I do not want to be assumptive. Would Director Geary like to make some comments? Nice softball, by the way, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Save.
Anyway, it's such an exciting night, and we get to welcome our new superintendent, Denise Juno, so that's very exciting. And we want to also give appreciation to our current superintendent, Dr. Nyland, and I have such confidence in this transition because of the great team that we have and all the work that we have done to create strong processes in place that really focus on education for every child, every day, with a lens around closing the achievement gap and the opportunity gap. And so, it is so exciting to know that we're bringing in a leader who shares those values and wants to move forward in that work. So, with that, other directors.
Director Patu, then Director Burke.
I also would like to welcome Denise to Seattle Public Schools, looking forward to working with you. And also wanted to say to Dr. Nyland, thank you for the leadership that you have given to us these years that you've been here. And I guess I'm gonna miss seeing you, since I'm the longest board director here, but thank you for all the hard work, and really appreciate it, because without your leadership, we would not have gone this far. So, thank you.
I would also like to welcome Ms. Juno. We're thrilled to have you, we're excited, we as a board and we as a city. This is truly, it's truly a shoulders-of-giants thing, as I've learned in two years and change. Every time I think, "Why don't we have this?", I realize, "Oh, there it is, we're working on it." And so, there's, everything that we're working on, we can look back one, two, four, 10 years and see the foundations of that work. And so, I also want to give a shout-out to Superintendent Nyland for the way he's helped us knit together a lot of those things that, even for me when I came into the district, we had a fairly disparate set of systems, and I think they've really helped align. We're a fun, rowdy board, you can have a great time, and we're very much a "we" and "with" sort of board, so, welcome to the team.
Other comments, questions, concerns, Director Pinkham.
Well, I just want to say, welcome. I'm looking forward to working with you and what, I think, wonderful things we can add to, what Dr. Nyland has already kind of got us going with our eliminating the opportunity and achievement gap, but there's just so much more. And for me, as, when they said, again, I was the first American Indian on the board for the city of Seattle, to see that now, we're gonna have a native superintendent, and we also have another native on the school board, that it makes me feel good, makes me feel proud, that, hey, I think Seattle's getting it right, we're going to the right place. And the African-American Academy, what they're doing here, we're going in the right direction. And I think with your leadership, you're gonna lead us onward and upward, and continuing going. You're just, I guess I'm just, you know, like Jill earlier, gee, emotional, but, khatseaya, thank you, and looking forward to working with you. Superintendent Nyland, thank you for getting us to where we are today.
Director Mack.
I don't know that I can say it any better than anything anyone else has said here, so I have to say ditto, 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 thank you, super excited about the future, and thank you for all of your service.
And Director DeWolff.
I didn't see this on the run-of-show that we had board comments, but mine actually is just very personal, I know that we've had a great conversation today, so I am particularly looking forward to some of the really great background that you come with and the opportunities for us to work together, particularly around student homelessness and improving the educational outcomes for our native students. So, I'm greatly looking forward to you joining our team. Thank you, Dr. Larry Nyland, for all of your work. I think a lot of people like to say, you know, you have big shoes to fill, but I think what I like to believe is that, Larry, you should take your shoes and bring your own, and help us chart a new course, help us chart a new path, and continue on the work we've done, so, thank you.
This is a really proud day. This is a proud day because we get to give thanks, huge thanks. It's a proud day because we did what was right, for the right reasons, and we have focus, and we have leverage, and we have a good team, and in the last three weeks, instead of having the rocks thrown at my head, we've had compliments all over this town. I frequently talk about being accosted in the banana aisle at the grocery store. The banana aisle is a pleasure to visit now. You guys did great. And we did it with the help of community partners, we did it with the help of our labor partners, we did it with the help of our exceptional staff, and we did it looking into our hearts, finding the right fit, and doing it for the right reasons. And with that, roll call, please.
Director Burke.
Yeah.
Director DeWolff. Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Patu.
Yes.
Director Pinkham.
Oh, yes.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
And with that, I will invite my colleagues to the front line, and we can have our signing. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I just want to say a few brief remarks. First, thank you to Dr. Nyland. I mean, as I've traveled around this district and visited with people, your leadership definitely shows through as far as the respect of the office, what you've done, putting projects together and task forces on all the right issues, and so, thank you for your leadership. I sort of feel like I am going to have to fill big shoes, and I hope I do right by what you've left. And thank you to the Board of Directors for placing your confidence in me to lead Seattle Public Schools. I look forward to working with you, with the talented staff in the district, parents and students, to build on your current successes, confront our challenges, and move positively into the future. I've spent the bulk of my career working to create a better future for the next generation. I'm excited about continuing that work here in Seattle. I know we all do this work because we believe in the power of public education and what it can do for individuals and community. Those of us serving in leadership roles have a duty and obligation to do right by every student in this great city. And as long as we continue to keep students at the center of our collective work and conversation, it will be hard to go wrong. As we embark on this new journey together, know that I plan to listen and learn from our many partners, and I'm committed to work with all of you to shape a vision for the district's future that works for all. I know that together, we will make big strides and will create a system that is inclusive and responsive, and makes a positive difference for the young people of Seattle. You know, we did talk about filling shoes earlier, and there's this old saying about, "Don't criticize another until you've walked a mile in their moccasins." And the best thing about that is after you do that, you're a mile away and you have their moccasins, so... Just a little levity. Thank you, Board of Directors, and community of Seattle, the parents, students. Thank you in advance for helping me to lead this district, and thank you for selecting me for this most awesome job. I really look forward to it, and I'm really glad that we made it official tonight, so thank you so much.
Director Mack.
I'd like to make a motion to that action item number two not be considered for action tonight, and instead, we move to the intro portion of tonight's agenda and introduce prior to intro item number three.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, new action item number two, approval of contract amendment with center point for interim benchmark assessments in math and English language arts for school-based implementation of MTSS. This is RFP 03767. This came before CNI March 13th for...
Consideration. Was for consideration.
Indeed. Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to execute a contract amendment with center point for an amount of $253,600 for benchmark interim assessments in mathematics and English language arts for grades three through 10.
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute a contract amendment with center point for an amount of $253,600 for benchmark interim assessments in mathematics and English language arts for grades three through 10.
I second the motion.
Who will be presenting this this evening? Would that be Chief Jesse? Please.
And this evening, we're just looking for approval for our contract center point. It's came through lengthy ARPS, and we field-tested it this year with 20 schools participating. The field test went very well, especially for math, so we'll be looking to extend math interim appropriate, as well as some of the questions. And then, as you know, we're also on a curriculum adjustment for new ELA curriculum at the elementary level, and so, CCC, and that will allow us to do alignment as we've learned more about curriculum this year. My last piece is just that this work was done with, in cooperation with principals and teachers, both on input of the construction of the items, as well as the scope and sequence.
Chief Jesse, can you give us a short explanation of the difference between high-stakes testing and interim evaluations for the folks watching on Channel 20 and for the good folks in the room?
No problem, and I'll use your fine words. When we expect to know students' stories, strength, and need, we need an interim assessment so that we're not surprised off of those high-stakes summative assessments. Interims are just a quick, they're 18 questions, they are just to help teachers inform their instructional practice on the spot. So, when we know more about what students know, we don't have to bore them with additional instruction of where their skills are at a gap. No high-stakes testing, and this is, again, just for those teachers and the principals to turn around and make sure that they're addressing the instructional needs of each and every student, whether you are demonstrating some need for help at grade level standard, at grade level standard, or you need acceleration.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues, Director Geary, then Director Pinkham, then Director Burke.
Perhaps this is coming because we're right in S-VAC season. I appreciate the need for interim assessments, and one of the things that, since I have been elected to the board, and one of the things we heard on the campaign trail was just the over-testing of our students. And so, it's just an opportunity, not that I tie it necessarily to this interim assessment, but the idea that, are we getting rid of some assessments as we go along, or are we just adding more? And is there any way that we can do that full analysis of all the testing and see where it's duplicative, and continue to weed out so we're not paying for more tests if we can get the information from the interims that we need to actually make meaningful changes in our classroom?
So, one of the items attached to this particular bar is a summary of the district assessment calendar. It is something also that was directed by one of the other directors to post on our website. It does give you a good summary of how much time we're spending on assessment out of the 1,058-plus hours. So, I do challenge those people who say we over-test or we're spending too much testing. If you simply look at that summary, something just for third and fourth grade, we average around seven hours out of the entire school year for assessment that we direct as a district. Yes, teachers create their own assessments, those formative assessments, and so on and so forth. Yes, to the other point is, we do hope to utilize this particular assessment for a couple other areas, because we do want to norm it, and norming really means for our ability to benchmark this and see where would standard scores be for students at different grade levels, again, being below, at, or above grade level, so that we can move that and see where students, we can predict some performance on that. And that would help us do things like advanced learning testing, where we test about 5,000 students every, on Saturdays. That would be a tremendous savings for us, and also very informative because we could have multiple data points. And my other one is around MAP. And we've had this conversation at CNI Committee around the MAP test. We've now had it in the district for over 10 years, and that assessment, my last point is that assessment really gives limited information. It is norm-based, national, that's why people like it, it's really attractive for that. It's a good screener, however, it doesn't give you the discrete Washington State learning standards, and so, teachers have very difficulty, if not able at all, to use that information to inform individual instruction for students.
Director Pinkham.
Under the equity analysis, it mentions, while conducting the 2017-18 field tests, ELA passages were analyzed for bias and the potential impact on educational equity. A decision was made to conduct a second ELA field test with custom-developed items that better align with the diverse student population of Seattle Public Schools. Through the second field test, we can put controls in place to ensure educational racial equity. Do you have examples of these custom-developed items?
Yes, yes, Director Pinkham. One of the, as I was mentioning before, why we're doing a field test, again, for another year for the ELA interims, is some of the passages were identity safety threat for our students. Some of the language and terminology they were using was really inappropriate, we feel, and was stereotyping students in situations, and so, we went through those as part of our screening. We didn't use them, but we caught them, and so, it's been a challenge, and so, we went back with the vendor to customize that, and we're actually in the middle of that process right now, this spring and into the summer.
So, what I mean, a customizing, so you're customizing the language in some of these assessments, is that what you're doing? Because it sounds like you're saying you're customizing some other way to assess this.
So, once we have, so the vendor has select passages, they use with a lot of other districts. Once we don't select those particular passages, we move to having new passages, and we have to create customized questions, right, that match that particular passage and that we are willing to accept. So, that's why you get that customization, and then, there's some technical aspects, as you might be familiar with, is, once I disrupt that and don't use that particular question, then it also might not be aligned to certain standards that we are trying to assess for, and so, we have to ensure that the items also are assessing for some of the learning standards that we want at that grade level.
And this seems to more concentrate on the ELA, what about the mathematics?
Math has been gone extremely well.
According to who?
The teachers, our customers.
I want to thank you for the presentation, and appreciate the work of the team and the committee. I have really just one remaining question, and then, sort of a request. I took the opportunity to take some of the assessments myself, and so, I spent a little bit of time as a fourth grader, and a little bit of time as a seventh grader, doing some math. And I just want to say with candor, these are hard. There's some really challenging, rigorous, multi-step math involved in this work, but it's grade-level appropriate, it aligns to the standards, and it's what I want my kids to know how to do at that grade level. So, I think there's going to be more conversations as we roll this out. You know, when, if we have students struggling, it's going to show that we need to do some more work, and if we have students that are doing great, it's going to be a great opportunity to, you know, to celebrate the success. So, I feel really good about the mathematical level and sort of the, what they say, the DOK, the depth of knowledge of the test. My request is that when we're looking at this, if you could do a pretty careful analysis of ELL students, because I think that there may still be a little, it may still be a little bit language-rich on some of the more complex problems, the language level feels like it could be a potential barrier to the mathematics. So, I just want that to be something that you're really conscious of as you're doing more pilot studies. And then, just to confirm publicly, is our current technology infrastructure compatible with this work? What's needed to be able to give these assessments?
So, folks on our DOTS team were part of the RFP, that was actually what some of the challenges were with it, just to make sure, and we were also ADA compliant, that also switched up some of the things within it, so our technology does match that, and so, that we are also resourced to do this rollout, and those, as we were having a conversation, the rollout cards have been really helpful for some of those schools because of our limited classroom space at some sites, have been really a big bonus.
Thank you. And just for directors to note as well, the bar that's up for approval has two additional bullets in the implementation section. One of them is that the assessment results be explicitly shared with families, which is something that is built into our assessment policy, so it's really just restating that. And some of the background on that is recognizing that, you know, assessments can be a contentious topic. I think historically, we've been a little bit passive in sharing those results, and I think that that has been one of the challenges with MAP and with the former Amplify Beacon test that was going through a development cycle, and so, we didn't build the trust of our community. So, I just want to be really intentional, building the trust, I think the team's done a great job so far. So, that was the first one. And then, the second one was to recognize that this could be used as a tool to inform the transition from elementary to middle school. I think that directors might have seen some emails about that. We don't have consistent practices across our middle schools, and we're creating a key performance indicator for eighth graders to be algebra-ready, and so, the question is, well, what are we doing as a system to help them in middle school identify those kids? And so, recognizing that this, the formative assessment will really help the sixth-grade instructors understand what prerequisite skills the kids have, what supports they would need, how it weaves into their MTSS system. And so, I appreciate staff incorporating both of those points.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, please.
Director DeWolff.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Patu.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Number three, BTA 4 and Bex 4 Award Construction Contract P5098 to CDK Construction Services, Inc., for the Dearborn Park Elementary School Roof Replacement and Seismic Upgrades Project. This came before OPS, March 8th, for...
Consideration.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to enter into a construction contract in the amount of $444,500 for the Dearborn Park Elementary School Roof Replacement and Seismic Upgrades Project.
I move that the school board authorize and approve the charge of the information, whoops, sorry, wrong one. Wrong motion. Hang on, we have script breakdown. That'd be great. I do not have the motion in front of me. So, what's in the bar? I can pull it up. Thank you.
That's teamwork.
Back up a little bit. Oh, my gosh. Recommended motion is a short story. I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute Construction Contract P5098 from BTA 4 and Bex 4 to CDK Construction Services, Inc., for the Dearborn Park Elementary School Roof Replacement and Seismic Upgrades Project in the amount of $444,500, including Alternates 1 and 2, plus Washington State sales tax, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary action to implement the contract.
I second the motion.
Who's presenting? Lucy Morello, you're up.
Good evening. Lucy Morello, Senior Project Manager in Capital and Planning. This motion was introduced to the board on April 4th. The historical renovation information was added. The historical renovation information was added at the request of the board. And that shows that the re-roofing and seismic upgrades were last completed in 1991. That's 27 years ago. So the roof has reached its end of useful life and needs replacement.
Director Mack?
Thank you very much. I have one question, and it's a technical one. I was taking my notes for this item and noticed that the minutes for that meeting don't have the same thing as this here. And I just want to clarify which levy dollars are being used. So this one says BTA four and Bex four. The minutes cite BTA three and Bex four.
I have Bex four and BTA four.
And we don't have Richard Best here because he might actually know off the top. I'm a little nervous about that it's actually referencing the wrong one.
Mr. General Counsel, you want to come to the box and help us out, please?
The action report that I have has this, but the minutes of our meeting from Ops had a different one, and I didn't have the original from the work session. So can we approve it and have it clarified later?
Yeah, I think that's probably appropriate. I do notice that the motion itself, as you note, references BTA four and Bex four. So assuming those are correct and they pass tonight, I think that's the kind of thing we can confirm later, and that would be acceptable.
Okay.
Director Geary?
I just want to thank you, thank Ops for putting in facilities and putting in that historical information and going forward for these kinds of big projects that are several hundred thousand dollars. I think that that's helpful for us to see that it has reached the end of its useful life. So I appreciate it very much. It's something that I want to see go forward.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Geary? Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We come to the introduction portion of our meeting. Number one, approval of purchase of equipment from Black Box to replace existing voice network that supports desktop telephones and five-year software and hardware support This came before Ops, April 5th, for? Approval of this item would approve a five-year contract for the telephone system upgrade with Black Box. Mr. Kroll, take it away.
Good evening, board members. John Kroll, Chief Information Officer. We want to introduce this item for a new phone system throughout the district. This will be in nearly 100 schools. Our existing phone system, the install was finished in 2003. So a lot of the equipment is actually older than that because that installation as well took several years. We, this went to public bid. We had seven responses ranging from 3.5 million to 9.5 million. Black Box was selected. Black Box is a public company and a reseller of NEC, which is our existing phone system as well. Going with the company with our existing phone system is going to add savings as well. Yeah, it's just one of those things that we need to replace after almost 20 years.
Thank you. Director Mack, Chair of Ops.
I want to thank you for being responsive to the committee's request to respond to a few additional questions by giving more background on, you know, what the situation was, as well as I see that you have brought some examples so that people can see. Can you actually bring those forward to the podium? Because actually, I think probably appropriately for the TV, I suppose I can hold it as well. You can set it right here. Let's do it here. That's okay, great. We are wanting, yeah, wanting to have the public see that these are the phones we're getting. It's helpful to have a visual. So thank you for doing that, as well as I appreciate that they, all of our old phones will be recycled through Washington's e-cycle program. So thank you for confirming that. And so we need new phones. They look great. Sounds like you've done really robust work here. I'm curious if anybody else has any other questions.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none? Uh, Director?
Has there been a lifecycle identified with these, given that, you know, you could take the old rotary phones and probably get a bunch of years out of them, and then the dial tone for a bunch of years? But, you know, now we're down to 20 in our last system, you said. What sort of life expectancy would, are we putting on this system, either due to the hardware or due to, you know, future obsolescence? You could take a wag even.
Yeah, it's about 10 years.
Okay. Is that that sort of industry standard?
Industry standard, yeah.
Thank you.
From five to 10 years?
10 years or something, 3, 9...
I admit to you that that disturbs me significantly. A 10-year lifecycle. This is the public's money.
I think part of that's up to us. It's important to have it on the record.
Absolutely. Good question. Well, question now?
Please.
Are there any products on the market that are not as disposable, that would have a longer lifecycle? Or is that basically the market these days?
10 years is pretty much standard for technology. Most technology is shorter than that. So computer life cycles range from, you know, three to five years.
Was the lifecycle issue addressed as a component of the RFP?
I'd have to look into that.
If you could do that before this comes back for action, it would be very helpful, and perhaps some benchmarking as far as, I'm not disputing what you tell us as far as obsolescence, but found that to be shocking. And maybe it's just because we're moving so very fast, there's a principle in technology.
Moore's Law.
Which law?
Moore's Law.
Moore's Law, I think is an operation. Director Geary?
Well, the idea about technology and obsolescence is that the systems are changing in such a way that their functionality is becoming greater, and therefore the old technology becomes obsolete because it can no longer handle what is being asked of it. These are telephones. And telephones have been performing the same basic functions for a long time. And so I do have a question. What is it our current phone system is not effectively doing? Or is it just that we are building new buildings and our new systems are not compatible with the old system and that's causing a problem for us? Because I'm, I call my school and apparently people answer the phone and transfer me where I need to go. So I'm...
No, good question. So one thing with technology, what happens is the manufacturer stops making that phone. So for instance, this phone is no longer made anymore. We can't get parts. The team's had to go on eBay and try to find parts to keep older systems going, literally. So that's one of the main things is, and it is one of the things with technology, is technology improves, the companies make new models. You see it with consumer products. With enterprise products, they try to make that window longer, which is good. But yeah, so we're at a risk right now where these phones are, it's a safety, it's a very important safety instrument in the classrooms and in the offices, that these things are working. And we, the longer we put it off, putting in a new phone system that we can get quick parts, we have a risk there.
So on this contract, are we going to ask for a spare parts depot that goes with it so we don't run into the same thing?
The, that's built, the repairs are built in, so we've got a five-year contract with them for repairs.
Okay, but I'm talking about guaranteed obsolescence here. If they discontinue our model, what recourse or safety net do we have to be able to repair this new fancy set of phones that we're replacing the old phones for because we can't get parts? It almost reminds me of the car industry.
It is like that. So I can check into that. So you're looking for, from five years on, it's kind of like the other one, like how long can it last? And how long do we, can we expect to get parts? Because that's a standard, I just don't have that off the top of my head. For instance, with our Dell contract that we did with computers, you know, there's a certain guaranteed amount of time that you can get parts.
Thank you. Obviously, you've touched a nerve. And if you can bring us more robust information at action, Director Geary?
Just one more thought. I had a friend who bought an Anglia, and he bought two more Anglias because he used the two to continue to refer the one Anglia, because who's making Anglias these days? It's a funny little car. And so I do also wonder, should we be rolling these purchases so that we can consolidate? And we have a bunch of phone systems, obviously, that we could take for parts to keep phone systems in some schools working while we replace them in other schools and we do this rolling system where we're maximizing the life of a product that is really performing the same function that our old system is going to perform? It's not doing anything new that I've heard. So I want us to be, I want us to be really thoughtful, because $3 million seems like a lot of money.
$3,700,000.
It's technology and we have, you know, we've allocated it. It seems like a lot of money.
Director Burke?
I want to be cognizant of time and also that we're sort of armchair quarterbacking a technology infrastructure item. So depending on how it's configured, you know, we may be limited to what we could do. So it'd be really informative, I think, if you can identify if they have a guaranteed obsolescence date, and then we just put some stuff in our planning around when we hit that, we might need to buy some extra inventory. And that would be a decision five, 10, 15 years down the road.
All right, I appreciate that. So I think I got the notes, and we'll bring that back.
Director Pinkham?
Next.
Yeah, I was looking at the back of these to see if they're VoIP capable, but it doesn't appear they have the right jack to do that. So that's what I think, eventually, that's what we're probably going to go to. We're at the University of Washington, we're already there. We're using VoIP at the University of Washington. We're no longer with phone companies, so we don't even have to dial, you know, special numbers to get a long-distance call. We can just dial directly. Boom, and we're good to go. So that's what I was wondering, it seems like we should be preparing possibly for to go VoIP. And does it seem like this is doing it?
Was that part of the RFP, VoIP?
One thing we didn't want to do is go with VoIP for the reason of our existing infrastructure and that the phones are used for emergencies. When you go with VoIP, you have to treat each one of the phones as a network device. So we would have to build out our wiring closets with a lot more switches and a lot more power. And then we'd also have to add generators and uninterrupted power supplies to keep them going during an emergency. So we purposely went with phones that aren't VoIP. We can add VoIP in the offices where they're attached to the proper backup systems, but in the classrooms for emergencies, we want those phones to work when there's no electricity.
Thanks for the clarification.
Appreciate it very much. Okay, moving on. Now we have our action item that is now our intro item.
Could I, point of personal privilege, could I ask that we move that intro item to the end of the intro items as compared to the number two, recognizing that we have a variety of guests here to talk about intro item number four?
I appreciate that. However, because it's capital facilities, we want to keep those together so capital facilities can leave when they're done. So, moving on. The answer is no.
What if I were so bold as to make a motion?
Take your best shot.
Motion to move that item, action item number two, to become intro item number six.
Action item number two on this agenda is the Bex four. It's confused with where you've gone.
I'm not hearing a second, Mr. Burke. Okay, moving on. Approval of guiding principles for the building excellence, Bex five, capital levy. This came before Ops, April 5th, for? Approval of this item would approve the board's guiding principles for the Bex five, capital levy. Madam Chair of the Operations Committee, Eden Mack, please speak to this.
Yes, thank you. I do want to clarify also the reasoning for having this item next to the next item on the agenda, which is the task force for the facilities master plan, so that these two items are somewhat tied together. So this introduction, which was originally going to be intro action because of the short timeframe that we're looking at and wanting to kind of get this done quickly, but we decided to go ahead and allow a little bit more time between introduction and action to provide additional transparency as to what exactly these guiding principles are all about and what they're supposed to do, and how we as a board will be using them in our decision-making. The levy planning that we do as a district is guided by Policy 6901, capital levy planning, I believe it's called. And in that policy, we have a number of things that are required that we do as a board. One of them is to adopt guiding principles for each levy, which is what this action is all about. We also, as a district, have a facilities master plan developed and we adopt that. And a third thing that we do per the policy is have an analysis of our stated priorities, i.e. the guiding principles and other priorities that we state scored and ranked. And that is something that's adopted by the board, and it goes into the facilities master plan. So the guiding principles are the board's statement of these are all the things that we really care about for this levy. And they're not ranked, they're not prioritized, but they're clearly stated. And then we go through a process of analyzing and ranking in an objective fashion, each of those priorities, principles against the projects that are up for possibility. So these processes are a little wonky, but I think it's, it became really clear that part of what was missing in this bar and clarification for the public was understanding what that process is and how we will be doing it. So there needs to be, from my understanding, additional background information into the bar, so that's clear to folks about what that is. And I'd like to ask Dr. Herndon to speak a little bit to his thoughts as staff lead on facilities... on facilities planning work, you know, the importance of this work and the process and so forth.
Absolutely, thank you. Flapurnan, Associate Superintendent of Facilities and Operations. Director Mack and I have been having several conversations over the last week or so to really help, help get as much clarity around this as possible. I think it is an extremely important step. These guiding principles and any prioritization that the board can provide helps staff then be able to assist in giving as much information about the ballot and communicating that out with the public. So, I think that having the board on the same page on the guiding principles and prioritization, and staff on the same page, really helps out with that. So, the value scoring is something that's going to be important. You may have seen already in the past, for BTA Four, we looked at some scoring that did not have an equity lens in that, and that's something that's real important that we need to make sure we have in here. And I would say that the, one of the key pieces is making sure that we have from the board, what exactly your definition of equity means for this levy. So, equity can mean a lot of different things to people, we want to make sure we're crystal clear about what that means, and then we can apply that to the projects to really help out with that. So, we have the typical ones that we've talked about, and I've seen the guiding principles. We have capacity challenges, we have building condition issues, but we're also really trying to emphasize the equity piece. But we want to make sure that that's clear to the entire board, staff, and the public as far as what that definition of equity means.
Director Mack.
Yeah, exactly. And the metrics that are used to create that criteria and ranking, the decision for that will lay ultimately with the board, but the staff will help us figure out what those are. And so, the next, the timing of this work, it's a process. The next work session that we have scheduled for Bex is the May 30th work session, and at that work session, that the criteria that will be used for ranking each of the guiding principles and priorities that we've stated will be presented, we'll have a conversation around it, and be able to say, yes, that makes sense, or no, it doesn't. The additional piece to that is that the task force, which we'll talk about further, it will also provide additional review.
Director Geary, please.
I have a question and then follow-up. Do, are you saying that as part of the guiding principles, we should define equity, or is that something that we can take further time on? Okay. So, with that then, around the bar, what I would like to see, which I think would be helpful in terms of creating the context that allows people to see how the guiding principles are going to be used, is that under the policy part, describe the procedural structure and where this fits in, that overall procedural structure, why we need them, and what they're going to be used for in terms of future policy work that we need to do, so that we see that it is an integral step of a process we have to go through. That would be helpful to me, and I think everybody. And then, in the background, talk a little bit more about that ranking process that will be done, the sort of what it looks like, so that people have a sense of then what's going to happen with these principles. Because as we discussed, it's too vague for me in terms of, I could see the public coming to us and arguing any number of things just based upon the words and not having that background that we can refer them to quickly. With regard to the equity definition, then, Dr. Herndon, could, is it possible for us to get examples of how that work has been done around facilities in other places, so that we're not trying to make it up from scratch? But, given your professional experience and, you know, ability to research into that, you can give us some examples and give us some explanation of what type of equitable question they're trying to answer? I think that would be helpful in terms of a conversation and make it far more succinct at, hopefully, like the May 30th work session. Those would be my suggestions.
Director Mack, and then Director DeWolff, and then Associate Superintendent Herndon.
I just wanted to respond to Director Geary and say thank you, because I think those are really important things, especially about the transparency, and that the importance of following this policy and doing this work, of setting the principles, is that we are making these decisions objectively, using data and analysis, and it's not individual board members cherry-picking a project that they like and that sort of thing, that we're actually working together to do that based on what matters to us. And that's, you know, that's important for tax, excuse me, taxpayer accountability, and I just, so I appreciate that we're having this conversation here.
Director DeWolff.
Thank you. I just had a couple of suggestions too, and I know, I wish we had some other work sessions to kind of dive into this. One of the things that Director Patu and I were talking about earlier was, if there's some way to capture, I don't know what it would be called, maybe community trust, but for many of our Bex levies, and for many of our communities, actually, we've had conversations where we've said, for example, and I'm just going to use Rainier Beach as an example, you're at the top, and we've said this for, I think, maybe the last two levies. So, I'm wondering if there's a way to include a metric or something on these principles? I don't know, I don't know, again, I don't know if it'd be community trust or something, but, well, it's more like we're honoring the talk from before, because I think part of it is, certain communities have been told, yes, yes, yes. I think about Rainier Beach, I think about Downtown Elementary, there are certain examples where we've said, we're going to think about it, we're going to look into it, or we've said, you're on the Bex, and then it doesn't happen. So, I think, I don't know how to frame that, but obviously, in our couple of weeks here, I'd love to kind of dive in and figure out a language around that. And then, I also just want to say too, my only caution around data is that often, data can make invisible communities of color, and particularly, the balance of data analysis cannot forget that equity has to be a part of that. And so, it is actually more a balance, and so, it will feel maybe to people untrained eyes that it seems subjective, but if we can find a balance between equity and data and that stuff, I think we can do a little bit better job. So, yes, important to have, heavily rely on data, but make sure that those types of things are not making it visible, the racial equity concerns and some of the ways that communities of color can be, or historically underserved populations can continue to be unseen. When I think about equity, I would like it to be thoughtful about making sure that historically underserved communities and populations are served utilizing targeted universalism. I think we've got so many things in our work portfolio here at the public schools, that I don't think we'd have to recreate any conversations or have any of these controversial conversations. So, I think there's a way to be thoughtful about our equity and using targeted universalism in this conversation, too.
Associate Superintendent Herndon, and I want to give you a time check. It is 8:05, and we still have three more significant, serious intro items.
And I want to make sure we don't forget number two, which is the Eckstein Middle School Seismic Improvement, item two. So, listening to the feedback, actually, I think there, over the past week, at a few of the conferences where I was, there are actually some presentations by the city of Baltimore and New Orleans, which I think showed some pretty good capital investments and how they were able to display that using some of the equity lenses. So, I can definitely find some good examples from other comparable cities on their capital investments within all of their neighborhoods to show what that investment looked like and what the equity would look like or not look like. So, I think I can definitely pull together some good examples and then try and apply it to what we've done here in Seattle.
Thank you. Let's go back. Time check, please.
I really want to say thank you to Director Mack, because this is a whole lot of work that she's pulled together, and to you, Dr. Herndon, in terms of getting ready for Bex. So, huge shout-out. I know you're trying, and we're moving forward, and we all want to support you in this, and we, so thank you.
And thank you to you for pointing it out, and, you know, we work as a team here, and this shows that. Way to go, guys. Number two, Bex Four, Award Construction Contract P5099 to CDK, Construction Services, Inc., for the Eckstein Middle School Seismic Improvement Project, Ops, April 5th, for...
Approval.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to enter into a construction contract in the amount of $2,917,672 for the Eckstein Middle School Seismic Improvement Project. Ms. Morello, take it away.
Thank you. This project consists of two phases over the summer of 2018 and 2019. The reason for that is, we're going in during the summer months, it's only seven weeks, and we can only get so much work done in the summer. The scope of work includes seismic improvements in various areas of the school, including installation of sheer walls and lowering exterior on reinforced masonry chimneys. This seismic work is voluntary. It also, various ADA accessibility improvements will be made to restrooms, drinking fountains, and a new chairlift will be installed. We did add historical information to this bar also, that show seismic upgrades were last completed in 2005 and 2015. Are there any questions?
That's my job. Any questions? Director Geary, please.
Gosh, if we could extend the paint to cover a lot of surface, that would be swell.
Definitely. I can't say that this bid came in about 490,000 under, and I believe we also got some distressed grant dollars and have been working with the principal and PTA and staff on other improvements, looking at painting and upgrading the finishes at the school.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now, for two, the Special Task Force on Facilities Master Plan Review and Bex Five Projects/Community Engagement. Approval of this item would create a task force intended to support the school board's oversight of capital planning by reviewing elements of the district's draft long-range facilities master plan. Chair Mack.
Yes, thank you. So, thank you for considering and talking about the guiding principles. I mentioned in that, that Policy 6901 governs our policy around capital planning. The facilities master plan is a requirement in that, that we approve the facilities master plan. It also states that the facility master plan informs our levy. And so, the facility master plan staff is busily working on that, pulling together all the data and information that goes into it. And in previous years and different times, we've had task forces that have supported the process along the way. At this point, we don't have one currently in existence. We have the Bex Oversight Committee, which does primarily, they do a little bit of forward-looking, but it's not the same planning forward. They do oversight over projects that are ongoing and so forth. And because this is such a short timeframe, but the need for public confidence in our evaluation of the need of where we really need buildings, our analysis of what, you know, our priorities and that sort of thing, after a fair amount of conversation, the, having a targeted, very targeted task force with a short-term, very specific charter that they're looking very focused at the enrollment and capacity projections and analysis to give us recommendations on, yes, in fact, these are the areas of cities in which we actually have major concerns over the next six years, so they can provide us with some information on that. And then, the second thing would be to additionally review the scoring of our priorities, to give an additional eye on that, to ensure that we are, that, you know, if there's something we didn't think of, and just, you know, open up the community engagement and oversight of, it's a supportive decision-making. Dr. Herndon, do you have anything additional to add?
No, again, Director Mack and I have been working on this for a little bit. There has been some conversation with Bex Oversight. Indeed, it is part of their function to help with the planning of capital. But if you were to talk to any of the members of the Bex Oversight Committee, they are more industry experts on methodology of construction, and not so much around the enrollment pieces. They're really good at the, what the market is right now, what are some wise investments for energy savings, but really having this other ability to give some input on basically some of the long-range planning. I think they, in some of that conversation, myself, Richard Best, and the Chair, John Palewitz, they definitely would seem okay with helping out with this and working together. It's not two separate committees that, you know, wouldn't have any interaction, but they both need to inform each other.
Director Burke.
I really want to give Director Mack kudos for this, because after two, two-plus years on the board, I feel like on the curriculum instruction side, we've got some really clear, you know, we've converged on CSIPS as a tool for building governance and strategic planning, and the formula for success is kind of our institutional vehicle. But on the capital side, you know, we've got a lot of things that we're continually working towards around, you know, student assignment plan, and enrollment projections, and, you know, capacity mitigation. And so, this really feels like this focus puts us all on a common sort of guiding document, it's a multi-year plan, which is one of the things that I had heard from community of, like, shouldn't the district have a multi-year plan? Yes, we do, but this really puts the focus on it. So, I just want to thank you for that.
Director DeWolff.
Also, thank you so much for all of your hard work. I know, I know you could use more coffee, because you were here all the time, and I appreciate your hard work. I, and then I know we've talked about this particular task force, being mindful of making sure that the folks that make up the task force is representative of our community. I think my only thoughts are on page four of what was included, I guess it would be under the place where it talks about number of task force members. It talks about racial diversity, and I know exactly what you're getting at. I wonder if we could just rephrase to include something just around representation, because part of it, not only just around racial identity, but particularly around gender identity or even ability, I think might be, just for some suggestions.
Okay, I'm going to wrap this one up. If we had such a master plan back in the day that we closed so very many of our schools, and when folks literally couldn't be contained in the lobby, when we had police officers at every meeting, we had distrust and ugly, and then what did we do? We reopened every door in one of those to the tune of $75 million. If we had had this kind of a tool then, we wouldn't have done that at all. So, again, big props to Director Mack, and big props to you and your team. I am loving the fact that we are reaching out to our community and truly engaging them instead of checking the darn box. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, review and approval of Career in Technical Education 2018 Annual Plan per Policy Number 2170. This came before CNI, April 17, for...
For consideration, because we should all really be considering this.
And I gave you about 10 hours of light reading on this particular topic today. Approval of this item would approve the 2018 Career in Technical Education Annual Plan. Mr. Perkins, take it away.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Caleb Perkins, Director of College and Career Readiness, and I'm joined by Jane Hendrickson, our CTE Program Manager. And I'm joined by Jane Hendrickson, our CTE Program Manager, Dan Golisman, our Principal for the Skill Center, and some partners that I'll reference in a moment. As was stated, this is our annual plan. And given the number of references tonight to CTE and Career Connected Learning, we're excited about the level of excitement and interest. And this plan is trying to marry that excitement with concrete ways of improving access to and the quality of our Career Connected Learning and CTE programs. Around seven strategies in particular. We went through those at the CNI Policy Committee. Since that meeting, we have updated information on facilities to connect to just the conversation that was just happening, given the importance of making sure CT and facilities go hand-in-hand in some of that planning. And the only other thing I'll point out before we take questions is that we did a two-step process this year where we introduced the initial idea in January to maximize engagement and partnerships. And that's further evidenced by some of the folks who are joined here today that I just wanted to call out and say thank you for being here. We have Malcolm Grothie and Kurt Butler, both from the Chancellor's Cabinet in Seattle Colleges. We have John Bershey, who is with the City of Seattle, helping to expand apprenticeships and instruction in trades across all of our youth. And we have David Watkins there in the back, who's one of our industry partners, serving on our General Advisory Council, all of them committed to not only improving Career Connected Learning, but making it accessible for all students and eliminating the opportunity gap in this area. And with that, I'll take your questions.
Director Burke would like to speak to this. Just to guess.
I don't actually have any questions because we've spent a lot of time working on it, but I wanted to share an example where I sat down with some folks to, you know, to try to engage around this idea of how do we reach outside our realm of K-12 and engage partners and get support. And, you know, the first thing they said is, well, you know, we really have to do some work around alignment. And I was able to open up the plan and say, look at, look at topic one. And, you know, each time they would bring something up, I could trace them to one of our, one of our seven strategies. So, you know, partly to the credit of Dan Gallagher and then partly to the work that your team has done building on that. That section of seven things, it feels like it really, it really touches on the needs that, for me as a board director, when people came and said, how can I help? It was always like, well, I'm not sure. Give me your card and maybe we'll figure something out. And that was just sort of an impasse. So, getting past that is really huge. If, if the Chair will honor you with the time, if you have an opportunity to speak briefly about the partnership, the multi-level partnership, but I want to give others a chance for questions.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Director Pinkham?
Thank you for this. Page 33, Appendix B, Career Clusters and Pathways. May I kindly ask, under government and public administration, is this planning and executing government functions at the local, state, and federal levels? Any chance where you can get tribal added to that?
Yes, sir. Apologies for the oversight.
Sovereign nations?
Of course.
Director Patu?
I too am very excited about this. It's one of my high interests and hopefully to see it take off and it, because I believe that all students deserve to have this opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Three minutes. Have at it. Time check, 8:20.
Very good. So, I know we'll all be speaking to the strategies from heart in a little while. So, Strategy Six has to do, connected with what Director Burke is referencing. We're trying to articulate very concrete ways that you can partner with the district so that, in essence, nearly anyone who's interested can connect with the district either in a small way around Career Connected Learning, all the way up to a major investment in our Career Connected Learning. And we're trying to articulate that in clear, easy-to-understand ways and also provide the very, the many models that are represented by folks in this room right now of the great things that are already happening so people can find models to follow. And in this way, we are copying the successful examples of other cities across the country and as well as in our own area. And we're excited to work with you all and continue the engagement process. So, the next time we submit this report, there'll be many more examples around each of these partnerships, all the way up to these, the significant investments we're talking about.
And I'll close it out by saying, Mr. Golisman, we've come a long way from my whining at you at the Option Fair to last night's extraordinary event at West Seattle High School and gorgeous, gorgeous branding. This, this makes me so excited. This is something tangible we can put our fingerprints on. This can make a difference in so, so many young people's lives. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you.
Expansion of Native American Educational Programming. This came before CNI, April 17?
And was moved forward with a recommendation for approval.
Approval of this item would approve $250,000 of additional baseline funds to expand the Native American Educational Program, including the addition of, help me with this, the Shik'achi. Thank you. I'm sorry. Program in the North, staff for after-school programs and a secondary liaison case manager in the North. Associate Superintendent Tolly, take it away.
Thank you. Again, Michael Tolly, Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. I have with me this evening Gail Morris, who's our Native American Education Program Manager. We're here this evening to introduce a board action item that, if approved, would increase the funding for Native American Education expansion. We're requesting $250,000 for that purpose. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Morris to give you a brief overview of the programs currently being provided, the process that was used to develop the proposal, and some of the components of the proposal coming forward.
Thank you. Good evening. Gail Morris, Program Manager for Native American Education, and I'm Natchalna, First Nations. First, I would like to, sorry. First, I would like to say that I was really inspired by the African male, African-American male advisory committee. I just felt so good being here in the presence of them and their solidarity. Also, I wanted to talk a little bit about our program and what we're asking for, but if you would just indulge me one moment. This came to our program classroom at Chief CEELF today and I want to share it with you. This is one teacher to Boo, and he wrote, Boo, I was fortunate today to host three male students in my room for lunch, and I asked them if they felt safe at our school. Two of them said absolutely not. Then, they went on to describe the bullying that they see in school. Then, one of them, third student, said, to tell you the truth, without Shik'achi, I wouldn't be here. I feel like they have my back. I asked him if he was sure he wouldn't be at this school without the program. And he said, absolutely, I might not be at any school. The discussion then drifted to other topics for the last 10 minutes of lunch. As the bell rang, the other two boys drifted out and student number three was the last one to leave. He then said, you know, if I am completely honest, Shik'achi is my paradise. So, this is, happened today and this teacher wrote Boo a letter. It goes on, I sent it to my bosses to forward on to you. You're welcome to read the rest of that news on that email. So, as we're looking at expanding the program, we know that this works as a Tier III intervention in Chief CEELF. We know that this provides not only identity safety, but a place for our kids to go check themselves when they feel like they need to leave or if they're having discipline issues or home issues, that this really works for them. And it not only works for students at Chief CEELF, but we also work with the students at Denny as well. So, this is sixth through 12th grade. I also want to talk about what we're looking at in terms of professional development or secondary liaison. As you know, our objectives for our Title VI funding is K-5 literacy, which I have consulting teachers that go into the school. And then, we have high school dropout prevention, which is Shik'achi and the secondary liaisons that go into the school. And work with students and work with teachers, look at discipline, track attendance, get them involved in programs like NEA, which, NEALA, which stands for our Native American Youth Leadership Academy, where we take them out with other Title VI programs throughout Western Washington to meet at Pualap, to learn to leadership skills, breakout session, icebreakers, to find their voice in public schools. So, this is a great intervention as well. I also wanted to talk about some of the Tier I interventions that we do, which would include the professional development. But I was reminded so eloquently by librarians today that we also have a library. And we're creating that library at MENI so that we can have these for students and we can have them for teachers, so that we can promote not only the since-time memorial curriculum in the schools and the new fish wars that we created through the Smithsonian slash National Museum of American Indians, but we will have these resources for teachers and students. We're hoping that eventually we can open up the library for students to come and we could do storytelling. This all, by the way, is at MENI Middle School. These are just some of the things that we do and the funding would help greatly. The next step, if this is approved, is looking at a, I talked to Director Mack about this earlier today, was a student assignment plan so that we can get our students into these schools, into Shik'achi in the South and then whatever school we choose to work with in the North. I think that's really about it. I just want to report, and you have all the materials that we had community meetings around all districts in Seattle. And they either want more Shik'achis throughout the district or they want an Indian heritage on North and South. In any case, they want to have access, equitable access for their children, both North and
You will find attached to the Board Action Report a briefing paper that outlined much of the information that was just shared, as well as a list of five components or options that were considered, which includes the option of opening a Native American high school. But we are not recommending that at this time.
Questions, comments, concerns? Director DeWolff? And then, Director Pinkham?
Thank you for bringing this. And I am on the Curriculum and the CNI Committee, and so, was really excited to see this come through. I just have a couple of comments. We just got some numbers that there are 408 students who identify as Native who are also experiencing homelessness. That would be about 10% of our student homelessness population. And we don't make up 10% of the student body, so just, you know, just really hold that crisis as we make these kinds of decisions. And I imagine these students would be greatly supported and benefit even more greatly by having this cultural and identity safety program in their schools. The other thing I just wanted to point out was that what I noticed here, particularly from the student benefit, was based on Native American student and family input, there's preference for remaining attendance area schools and receive support in that setting. I'm grateful to you and the work that you've done to utilize the resources we do have available and make the most of this program. And I'm really absolutely excited to hear that kind of a feedback from our students. My last thing before I let Director Pinkham go is that I would love to make a pitch to move you from a manager to a director role. I think the work that you're doing is vitally critical and I don't know if that's something we can say, but I just, so.
I think I've heard everybody up here say that. I think you've got consensus. Heard, I hope? Director Pinkham?
Katia, Gail, for all the work that you're doing right now and Superintendent Nyland for bringing this money forward, because I think, you know, that has been the issue with the Native community. That seems like, God, we've got to be at one place. There's only services down here, but we're spread across the district. Where do we go? And, and so, then adding something to the North is a step in the right direction. So, again, but as Gail added, hopefully eventually we'll get to that point where we may have something on both North and South ends. Because right now, just that Chief South and Denny helps out those students who hate what you read today, great, but what about that student that isn't at Shik'achi and doesn't have that resources? And if it's an attendance area school, how can we get our Native students to that school? So, that's what you said you talked with Director Mack. Well, what about the student in the assignment plan to help out? And I think that's when you look at this, I know you're saying right now, not recommending Indian Heritage High School right now, but hopefully we'll come back in the future. I'm not going to drop it myself personally. That then does, kind of becomes an option school to let students go there if that's what they need, as I can feel safe here if I go to this school, rather than, okay, I'm going to be here, but, God, look at what Denny has, look what Chief South has. I wish I can go there, but then our assignment plan says, no, sorry, you can't. But, so, if we have this, how can we install or use Indian preference? Yeah, that's just one thing, somehow, how can we do that? If we're getting federal funds for these kids that are identifying, well, let's see if we can use Indian preference in the student assignment plan, how, what the legal thing might be if they're federally recognized? Then, there's also, okay, then what do we do with those that aren't federally recognized? Because I think, you know, when I look at the numbers here, it says 30 Native students at Lipton Springs. Lipton Springs claims a lot more than 30 Native students. They're saying that 30 number is wrong, but again, it's our number system and how we count. But I'm all for this and as echo, I will say to Director DeWolff, I think this was a director position in the past. We need to get it back to a director position.
I would, I would like to just answer your question about the funding. I would like to keep in mind that the Title VI federal funding is $200 per student. It's nothing, this is a small portion of my budget. Most of my budget comes from baseline Title I, LAP or III, and then we write grants as well. So, the federal funding could, could not. I mean, it doesn't take care of much, but I wanted to let you know that when we look at, we can't obviously do an Indian preference, but what we would like to do through Shik'achi and what we do in Chief CEELF is that upon instructor's permission to enter the class so that they're just not putting any student in that classroom so that our students do have a priority to go into the classroom and receive the services and the support, whether it's, you know, special ed or working on math. You know, we hire people, I hired someone who had strong math skills. So, we do give, through instructor's permission, those students who need it the most. And because it's Shik'achi, and the Shik'achi means that we hold you up in highest honor, it is Duamish, it is Southern Lushutse. We want to honor that. We want to honor those students that come to us first. And as far as looking at the attendance area, you know, we want to be able to work with those students who are Native, that we know are Native, that, you know, it's kind of like when you look at the pathway for highly capable. Well, they're highly capable. We know our Native students and how they would benefit from the class.
Director Mack?
Yeah, it was, it was great to catch you in the hallway earlier today to talk about this challenge around having an amazing program, but then maybe students are not being assigned to that school or won't be because they have a different attendance area school and the challenge around that. And your suggestion that maybe having a pathway for these students would make sense so that they, you know, they don't have to go, but they would be able to do that. I think it's a very interesting idea. I think it's honoring the, you know, the access, the equitable access to the, to this program. And so, I look forward to that kind of continued conversation as we kind of talked about the, you know, the updates, the student assignment plan happen typically in the fall. And the process to get there is, you know, it takes a little bit of time to get there and then, you know, it's, it's done in the fall for the following year. So, you know, the process of making those changes, it, the chances are better if we start having robust conversations internally with enrollment planning, with community, et cetera, about what the possibilities and challenges would be. So, thank you.
Director Geary?
I would love to see a way for us to make these programs that promote identity celebration available to our kids who identify as Native. And I want it to be aligned very closely to a place where they get the full offerings of a comprehensive high school. Because I don't ever, I just want to make sure that if, if a student of ours wants to access something that is identified as a place for them culturally, that they're not having to forego biology or AP biology. It's really important to me that safety and access to great education is just a guarantee for all of our kids. So, that's the lens I will use and that is the fight that I will fight for these kids.
I'm going to close it out by big props and respect to Superintendent Nyland. I know this has been a particularly delicate dance and... I know this has been a particularly delicate dance and I really appreciate you doing it in a sensitive, incremental fashion and bringing the right folks along. And that's hard, hard work and again, that's part of your legacy and you should be ever so proud. Thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you ever so much, folks.